Welcome to this special public session of Moncton City Council. Madame Lagraffia.
We have an agenda before us, Your Worship, to be approved.
So is there somebody who wishes to approve the agenda for this afternoon? Thank you, Councilor Terrio, Deputy Mayor Terrio, and seconded by Councilor Leblanc. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Reading of minute notice. Please be advised there will be a special public meeting of City Council at the Avenue Center Lonsbury Lounge, Moncton, New Brunswick, on Wednesday, September 11th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. for the consideration of the following. Reports from administration. Presentation by New Brunswick political party leaders and local candidates. Green Party, Liberal Party, Progressive Conservative Party. Your Worship, are there any conflicts of interest? Declarations?
I do not see any. I think we're good. Excellent. So, uh, thank you all for being here tonight and for participating in this very special public session. Council residents don't have the opportunity very often to hear directly from party leaders on topics that are specific to our community. So, to start, I'd like to remind everyone of the format for today's meeting. Each party will have a thirty-minute time period. So the first ten minutes with a two-minute warning will be for the party leader to speak on the four priorities that we have put forward in a document that was shared with the parties, and of course, is also on our website. Our priorities, which are in alignment with the Union of New Brunswick Municipalities and the Association Franco-Fondée Municipalité de Nouveau-Brunswick, are municipal fiscal reform, housing, social needs, and community safety. The final twenty minutes after the ten-minute introduction, which we're going to be very strict on, will be for council to ask specific questions on these priorities. We ask that the leaders respond to the questions, and that we ask that they are asked, in a succinct manner, so that we can cover as much ground as possible. La soirée va se dérouler en deux parties. Le premier dix minutes permettra aux leaders d'adresser directement les priorités mises de l'avant par le Conseil. Réforme fiscale municipale, logement, besoins sociaux et sécurité communautaire. Le dernier vingt minutes comprendra une période de questions provenant des conseillers. This is a public session, however, only council members will be asking questions. Each party will follow the same format. The order of presentations has been established as follows. Green Party, Liberal Party, Progressive Conservative Party. So, to councilors, I would let you know that the microphones are sensitive and counterintuitive. Up means on, and down means off. So, I know, it's weird. Let's get to it. I would like to welcome David Kuhn from the Green Party, and I hope that you will come to the podium, and please introduce your candidates to us.
Thank you very much, Mayor Arnold. Merci beaucoup. Merci pour la invitation d'être ici avec vous ce soir afin de discuter des enjeux très importants. Okay, I'll go closer to the mic. So, yes, thank you. Let me introduce the, uh, some of the Moncton candidates, some Moncton area candidates on our slate, who are, who are with me tonight, as part of our excellent slate of candidates from around the province. So, um, we have Danny Blanco for Moncton East, Vincent Barola for Moncton South, Sarah Lord for Riverview, and Jean-Kief Giger will be here shortly, I believe, for Deppman Cook. Alfreda Ten, il est électeur, il connaît ce corps en député qui est excessif, qui écoute et qui agit pour résoudre les problèmes. People know me as a solutions guy. I don't stop till I find the answer, till I solve a problem. That's how I, uh, and my colleagues in the Green Caucus function in the Legislative Assembly as parliamentarians. That's how I function as leader of my party, and that's how, uh, my caucus, our caucus and myself will function, uh, should we be chosen to govern this province, uh, or hold the balance of power. I, um, know that people are concerned with the way government is failing them, uh, that they feel poorly served, and that includes municipalities. The problems that have been raised over and over and over again have been kicked down the road, and the pace at which issues get addressed is really a snail's pace. That's gotta change. I like the idea of a slapshot speed for, uh, addressing, uh, addressing solutions. That's the kind of action we need once the decision is taken. Ten years in the legislature, ten years of committee work, I have a pretty good understanding of where the roadblocks are and how to remove them. I know Moncton's experienced extraordinary growth, which presents extraordinary opportunities, but also represents, um, extraordinary challenges at the same time. And those are both short-term, in your dooryard now, and, uh, those that are building and will become problems sooner than later. So, with respect to municipal reform, we've had a huge change in local governance across the province, and, uh, what we haven't had is a huge change in the fiscal arrangement to ensure municipalities can deliver on their responsibilities. And by the way, I wanted to thank you for your public service. As a provincial politician, I well understand the sacrifices you make, the time you put in, uh, and probably, and certainly more in some ways than provincial politicians, that you don't have the kind of support that we do in terms of staff and so on. So, with respect to the fiscal framework, uh, there needs to be support, and we would see it in the form of a number of things. Certainly transferring the lion's share of the provincial, uh, portion of the industrial property tax to Moncton and other municipalities. With the small exception, we still need at the provincial level a sliver of that to ensure environmental enforcement is covered, uh, for those industries. Yes, of course, to finally implement the commitment to, uh, provide the excise tax revenue from cannabis to municipalities. And then, come to agreement, and it's gonna be different, I think, in different municipalities, over how best to further supplement the income of, uh, of municipalities like Moncton to meet their varying and different needs, because all the needs are different. We've got overhaul the equalization formula to make it transparent and fair, comprehensible, which it's not, um, and that's a, that's a straightforward action that needs to be tackled in consultation with municipalities. We will review and overhaul provincial assessment legislation to make it transparent and fair, to ensure that, uh, properties, especially industrial properties, that tend to be assessed at a pretty low level compared to the rest of the country, that their assessments start to line up with what's typical elsewhere in Canada, uh, so that, uh, that's fair and the taxation that flows as a result, uh, is appropriate. We will provide flexibility in property taxation by eliminating the multipliers that you're constrained by right now. Our party believes that municipalities need the flexibility to, um, to manage tax rates for the different tax categories without being encumbered by the multipliers, so we would eliminate those multipliers, so that you're not stuck, uh, when you want to, say, modify industrial rates, uh, of having to also change residential rates at the same time. That would be gone. And we would add additional categories as well, uh, if, uh, desired in, in, uh, consultation for, uh, for you and other municipalities. On housing, um, we would mandate the, what I call the new NB Housing, which has had its tires reinflated and it's been staffed up after really being a paper, uh, exercise for quite a long time, um, to drive the development of non-market, nonprofit cooperative housing, because that's affordable. Both new builds and, uh, rentals are repurposing existing buildings, um, many, some of which exist in, under provincial ownership, and we would create a bank, uh, of those and make them available to the municipality, in your case, to Moncton. But we need to light a fire under New Brunswick Housing Corporation. We need to get it working like it did before, in its heyday, when it really drove the development of affordable housing, made sure that we had an adequate supply, um, back in the seventies and eighties. It was done once, we can do it again, and the need is, if anything, greater today than it was then. We think that it's absolutely essential that there be an urban housing strategy with targets to hold us to, to achieve in our cities. We need to treat our major cities, uh, as the, um, drivers of economic development. They are in this, um, province and end what, after ten years in the legislature, I see as kind of a, um, a bias against our cities, um, in decision-making, and that's gotta stop. We've gotta treat our cities appropriately, and we've gotta treat our rural areas appropriately. And actually, we're not doing either well. I want to say that in terms of affordable housing, one of the novel things that we would do is alter the property assessment system for rental units, so that those rental units, so that the, the property assessment will be significantly, uh, set as, based on the income, the rental income from those properties, from those rental properties. So if you have a rental property offering low rent, affordable rent, then the property assessment will be low, the taxation will be low, which would reduce the, that percentage of their, uh, their overall operating costs, and help drive development of affordable housing, commercial sector as well. The luxury building, uh, property assessments would be higher, uh, because the rents, the rental income would be higher, and, uh, therefore, uh, the, uh, they would pay a higher level of tax. Of course, we would join New Scotian PEI in, uh, in, uh, ensuring that the PST is removed for a while from both the construction or the renovation and repurposing of affordable rental properties. That is a commitment I made in the legislature, and I want to see it happen, and I would deliver on that. Is that two minutes? Excellent. On social needs, um, in two minutes, but we're gonna have lots of time for questions. I would say, um, a couple of things. One, uh, our party would support the development of a downtown community health center for vulnerable populations in the, in the city, um, that, uh, would include the homeless community in the, in the city. Ideally, it would be a partnership between, uh, Vitalité or, and the University of Moncton, or Horizon Vitalité and the University of Moncton. Seen it work in Fredericton so well, uh, that downtown community health center has served the population well, and has made a huge difference in people's lives. Uh, so that's an important one. For us, we need, we, I would have NB Housing build public, uh, critical complex care, care housing for those folks who are difficult to house. My writing office is right downtown in the core of Fredericton, and so I have lots of folks coming in to seek help who are homeless. That's a regular occurrence. And I know there are some people that are very hard to help, help lots of people, but they're very hard to help. So we need that kind of critical complex care housing, and we need to address the underlying, significant underlying causes of homelessness, which is mental illness and trauma. And that means providing and access to free mental health counseling and psychotherapy where it's necessary, and will make a difference, uh, for folks to address those things. We need to increase, for sure, uh, the rehab beds, um, for addictions, but it's no good to go through rehab and then end up back on, on, on your addiction because of your underlying problems, your mental illness, the trauma you've suffered. And let me tell you before the final alarm rings, that, uh, fifty percent, almost, of people who are homeless today first experienced homelessness in their twenties. In their twenties, thirty percent of those leaving foster care or group homes become homeless. So, we need to tackle that part of the population, uh, to reduce the numbers of people entering homelessness in the first place, but it's housing and mental health care to help alleviate that problem. So, just in quick, uh, closing, uh, a government led by me will be collaborative, uh, collaborative at the cabinet level, collaborative with the caucus, collaborative across party lines, as we were during the minority government, to, with some significant success. And we're dedicated to rebuilding trust between the people and their government, which is desperately needed, desperately needed, but starts with respecting everybody, but succeeds through action, not words. Thanks very much. Merci beaucoup.
Thank you. So, uh, we will follow your lead, and we'll start with fiscal reform. Counselor Legere.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Is it up?
Yeah, yeah. You can hear me?
I can.
Oh, very good, thank you. So thank you for your comments, um, and you touched on, uh, some of the aspects of the municipal reform that, uh, we were very interested in. I'd like you to comment if you could, as well as the property tax that you mentioned. What about the concept of a percentage of HST, uh, transferred to municipalities? And also, uh, would you be open to a, uh, new model for the equalization, uh, formula?
So, on your second question, yes, that, we need a new model for the equalization formula, because it's not working for anybody, really, uh, and it needs to, uh, achieve the goals that are set for it. So, yes, absolutely, um, we need to restructure that, turn it into something that's gonna work. As far as the one point off the HST, the transfer that to municipalities, my, my, my hesitation is this. We have to make a generational investment in fixing our healthcare system. It's crumbling, it's falling apart, and our staff and patients are paying the price. So, we need to be able to ensure that we can make that generational investment, and I'm prepared to go into deficit for short term, if that's what we need to make that generational investment, because there is nothing more important than healthcare. We don't have a healthcare system that is serving people, people that can continue to die and suffer, and our staff are gonna continue to leave, um, and work in other provinces or get out of the profession altogether. So, we've got to do that. So, that's what gives me pause on, on that proposal. So, I'm, I'm open to talking about it, once we get, you know, got into, into the books and see what's going on, uh, certainly worth having it on the table for discussion, because I, we do firmly believe that municipalities have to have a, um, a broader source of income beyond property taxes that's consistent and long-term, uh, and that their income on property taxes needs to be improved. So, um, that's a, that's a point of discussion. I threw out at a meeting of the, the New Brunswick Municipalities Association, I think, it was, the idea of looking at, what about, what about a, a point off the, uh, income tax? And, uh, everyone groaned when I said that, so, you know, I don't know, but I, but I'm an idea guy, and at this point, right? So I haven't got all the information in front of me to, 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 uh, say whether that's a good or a bad idea, or whether we can afford the one percent, because that's two-hundred-and-twenty-five or so million dollars a year, which would move out of the provincial revenue into municipal revenue. So, it's still public revenue, I get that, and maybe, uh, depending on the partnership arrangements between municipalities and the province on delivery of services, maybe that could make sense, but that's open for discussion.
Well, thank you, and I think you're recognizing the, um, fiscal challenges that municipalities have, and I think that's really important, so I appreciate the, uh, the willingness to consider that, and, uh, and certainly that will be on the table.
Absolutely. When, when our chief of police in Fredericton tells me they can't afford, uh, to, to do community policing like once was done, given the security-
...our cities, I say there needs to be better, um, better support for, for our cities and municipalities to ensure that kind of, uh, that kind of service is there.
Thank you. Moving on to housing, Counselor Bourgeois. I think-
Oui.
Oui.
Bien sûr. Parlez, euh, proche à la micro, oui. Merci.
C'est mieux? Oui, excusez. Il manque du logement, et il manque du logement abordable aussi.
C'est ça.
Si vous étiez au gouvernement, est-ce que vous élimineriez l'impôt foncier sur les propriétés résidentielles non occupées? La pièce-demi par cent pièces d'évaluation?
Non, je pense que, euh, la proposition de modifier le système pour le, pour, euh, pour la détermination de la valeur des propriétés, de, 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 les, euh, les départements, par exemple, à, sur la question, sur la, le, 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 la taille de la revenu, euh, c'est, pour nous, c'est le, le, un souci important, parce que il va exagerer le développement de la logement abordable, parce que le, le, le taxe à la fin sera moins cher pour les entreprises, les propriétaires qui développent les départements. Donc, euh, le, 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 le taxe, le taxe, double taxe anglais, maintenant, il est moins, moins cher maintenant, c'est pas double, euh, mais maintenant, au cause de tous les demandes pour, pour un budget, améliorer les services publics au Nouveau-Brunswick dans chaque coin de province, je veux dire, non.
Okay. Vous avez abordé un petit peu la stratégie d'un logement pour tous, mais on a une question spécifique pour vous. Est-ce que votre gouvernement réduirait les délais de la stratégie, la mise en œuvre, et augmenterait les fonds pour le logement abordable à l'intérieur de cette stratégie?
Absolument, comme, comme j'ai dit, c'est important de, de, de lancer un, un effort urgent, un effort urgent avec un budget raisonnable, d'assurer le développement de, de, de logement abordable avec les, avec les partenaires, des organismes, des boules de créatives, les cooperatives, etc., etc. Ah, oui, les fonds, les fonds doivent être là, mais la, la, la vitesse qui, ainsi New Brunswick doit, euh, faire leur, leur travail doit exagérer sur une grande échelle.
Okay. Notre centre-ville comporte à peu près trente-trois pour cent de stationnement, euh, plat uniforme, sans étage. Est-ce que vous permettriez à notre ville de charger une taxe sur les terrains sous-développés tels que ces stationnements-là?
Absolument. Absolument, ça c'est une bonne idée. Je suis regardé, euh, à Saint-Jean, au centre-ville à Saint-Jean, le grand, le grand lacune qui existe, euh, dans le passé au centre-ville, c'est pas acceptable, donc oui, je pense que c'est une bonne idée d'assurer le développement, euh, après, euh, après, le, le, la ville donne, le, 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 donne leur, euh, leur permis, leur permis pour développement, oui.
Okay. Deux autres questions. Est-ce que vous adopterez une loi régissant la location de courte durée? Short-term rentals? Qui comprend un régime fiscal avantageux pour les municipalités comme-
Oui, maintenant, il existe comme un engagement dans notre programme électoral, donc, on va lancer le, le programme électoral dans quelques semaines, mais c'est une partie de notre programme électoral, oui.
Okay. Dernière question. This one needs a bit of introduction. The province owns seven, um, subsidized housing units in the city. Lewis Street, Auburn Circle, Choice Avenue, and others. Unfortunately, these seven units are all segregated units. That model was abandoned fifty years ago, and yet we still have them today. The city recently established a committee with Rising Tide and NB Housing to explore how to transform the seven units into mixed or integrated housing developments. Unfortunately, NB Housing cannot collaborate in this effort unless it owns all new units. The province, the province is thus maintaining the unacceptable, abandoned, antiquated, segregated model. Question: Will you change the rules governing NB Housing to allow it to integrate its seven units in Moncton as soon as possible?
Yeah, not just in Moncton, but yes. I mean, we, we know today, in twenty twenty-four, that, that you need to have mixed housing. The segregation is not, uh, a good approach. It has to be done properly, um, because I saw them relax the rules, uh, in the wrong way in Fredericton and in the seniors', public housing for seniors, uh, and, uh, created a lot of security problems and so on. But, uh, I am confident that it can be done properly with the right, uh, the right, uh, rules, uh, to, to bring people back together in a, in a greater diversity within public housing. The, the idea of projects, housing projects of the past, don't fit with today's, uh, reality. And it, it's gonna be better if done well, will be even better for everybody all around. Absolutely.
Thank you. Next up, social issues, and Counselor Crossman, I have you up first.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Thanks for your presentation, thanks for being here today. I guess your, your comments with regards to the previous, I really would have liked to chime in on, so maybe we can have a, a discussion offline on that. But, um, the questions that I'm gonna ask you today, have you seen these questions prior to us asking them?
I don't know if I've seen your questions, I've seen the briefing documents that-
Just the briefing documents.
Mayor's office sent me.
That's great, good, thank you. Okay, so, this will be a surprise. Okay, great. Will you commit to building an inpatient stabilization and rehab center in Moncton for the most acute cases of mental health and addiction?
I did see that, actually, and I didn't quite understand what that all entailed, but, um, if it's something like I was talking about with respect to, um, 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 building critical complex care housing to, to, to move people into, um, then, if, if that's how it aligns, I mean, critical care complex housing is, is what's been done significantly in British Columbia and Vancouver, it's worked very well. People who are, who are hard to house are housed twenty-four-seven wraparound services, um, and, uh, we don't really have much of that at all. And, uh, and so if, if, it sounds like they're similar, but maybe there's some differences you're thinking about.
Okay, great.
I think I have Counselor Kingston up next for the next-
Okay, perfect, thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Madame Baddas. Welcome, David, to Moncton. We, uh, we wear this every day as a municipal council, David, as you know, uh, in the major cities. City spends millions yearly, but really not our jurisdiction, but we're here on the ground level fighting the battles, uh, with help from our provincial partners. So, um, you've seen all the stats, Moncton has more than Saint-Jean and Fredericton combined in terms of homeless people, and I guess it reflects the Counselor Crossman's question a little bit, committing to providing the necessary funding, uh, funding and support for an in-community rehab and stabilization wraparound services, which we badly need here in the city.
Yeah, well, if I, so, yes, um, that's needed, and, uh, and we would support that, no question about it. Again, I'm, I'm really kind of fond of this critical complex care housing model, and, and that can accommodate that as well, that would be great. Like I said, I, I, I know, as an MLA with a downtown constituency, uh, and my office kind of in the heart of it, um, and I, and I, unlike Jean Chrétien, I actually do talk to people who are homeless regularly, if you remember that old story, anyway, um, and try and do on a can to support them, and, uh, and there's some tough cases, but we've gotta remember that they're people, they're, they're, they're people's sons and daughters and mothers and fathers. I, I had a father, a guy came in who turned out to be the father of something, a young woman I knew, uh, I had no idea, that, so, we, we need to treat everyone as people, uh, treat people compassionately and provide them with the supports, uh, they're gonna work for them. But we, we need to, it's like twelve neighbors, and I know Moncton is, uh, thinking about, or has kind of got something going like that, but, uh, twelve neighbors in Fredericton. The approach there was really to try and meet people where they're at and, and find out where they want to go, and see how they can support them. That's not for the people who are most difficult to house. I think that's what you're talking about, and what I'm talking about with the critical, um, complex care housing. But people, there, there isn't a part, a, a, part of the homeless population that needs that critical care, and let's provide it. And we can talk about, you know, the details about how best to do it, it's needed, so yes, we would support it. This isn't forced, but, uh, in the end, everyone does want some kind of, wants housing. Everyone wants housing, and everyone wants to get better, um, and we need to provide those services to enable both of those things to happen.
Terrific.
Thank you, David, thank you, Madame Baddas.
Deputy Mayor Terrio.
Merci, Madame Laméresse. Bonsoir.
Bonsoir, Paula.
Acceptez notre invitation. Comme vous le savez, le dossier des enjeux sociaux n'est pas de jolie diction municipale, mais malheureusement, on doit y travailler comme vous le savez. Assumeriez-vous la responsabilité première des soins et de la réduction de, du nombre de sans-abris dans notre collectivité? Comme vous savez, nous avons un très grand nombre de sans-abris.
Oui, certainement, c'est la responsabilité provinciale, donc on doit avoir l'capacité qui n'existe pas maintenant, de, de assurer que le gouvernement, euh, euh- to assure that the government, um, uh, 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 does the, 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 the actions necessary, uh, to tackle the difficulties that exist in, in our city. Uh, so, uh, yes, it's, it's a responsible provincial responsibility. Now, the structure of the Ministry of Development, uh, of, of Social, it's not acceptable, uh, 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 to, uh, to make the new changes that are necessary. Um, so, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to change the structure of the Ministry of Development Social. Uh, it's necessary now. There are just four major regions, for example, in New Brunswick for, for the Ministry. Uh, it's not acceptable. We have to have the regions for the Ministry of Development Social which, which, which represent an effective, uh, scale um, in each corner of the province, here in Moncton, for example. So, uh, with, with our, uh, 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 our structure, uh, which exists with the, the, an effective scale, uh, it, uh, it will be easier to assure, uh, 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 to ensure that the provincial government will be, will have the future as a partner, um, uh, acceptable for, uh, for the, the, the city of Moncton and the other cities in New Brunswick. Um, but the leadership must remain with, uh, the, the Minister and the Minister. For the Minister.
Thank you. I'm going to ask councillor Butler to bring us home on community safety in four minutes.
Wow, four minutes. Uh, oh, thank you, uh, David, and also to your candidates and also for the, everybody to come out to listen tonight. Uh, community safety, your, your first ten minutes went quick and you didn't get a really, you get a chance to speak on it, but we as the city of Moncton have the highest, according to stats, candidate, third highest, uh, crime rate in the country. Uh, from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, our policing increased by forty percent. We had to start a new program called Community Safety Officers, and that cost is two hundred and thirty percent. So, you know, it's costing a lot. Uh, one of the things that we ask for any government that's coming to power is to please have a look at the Police Act, that we need, uh, community safety officers to have more power. Uh, we can't expect our policing, the RCMP or city police or whatever you have, to do all of, to carry the whole load. You have, you have to change, everybody has to have a little bit of power. And I think it's very important that community safety officers, not bylaw officers, but we're talking about community safety officers, have a little bit more training, but also a little bit more power that they can, uh, perform. The next thing is, is the, the establishment of a mental health court here in Moncton. Uh, I realize there's some stipulations to that, that they have to have a residence and, and things like that, but I think that, uh, with us, we have a lot of mental health and addicted people i- in the city of Moncton that causes the, about eighty percent of our, of our crime or the calls for service from fire, ambulance, police. And we have to have some way to deal with this as, um, the rule of law. You, you, you just can't keep breaking the law and say, well, I'm mentally ill or have an addiction. I have no home address. There's still got to be some type of, uh, uh, some type of, uh, care to be given to them. And I think Mental Health Court would do that. My third question, and I'm trying to get too fast because the mayor gave me four minutes. Uh, but the next one is, even with our provincial jails and federal jails, we have to have a better exit strategy when they come out. They come out onto the streets, uh, two years less a day, that's provincial. Uh, two years more than, two years plus a day, you go to federal. But when we, when they come out, they come onto our streets with no education, with no place to live sometimes, uh, and then they're right back into the same thing. So that old saying, i- if you're an alcoholic, you shouldn't own a tavern. So these people are getting out of jail, uh, they're going right back to where they are, have come from, and there's nothing, uh, there's nothing to give them to help them over that, that bridge. So there would be the questions that we would look for.
Okay, thank you. Um, so on the, on the community safety officers, uh, yes, as long as the training, which goes hand in hand with that, is, uh, appropriate.
Well, it would be our, our liability, so we'd pretty well.
Yeah. So, but, but I think as province, we need to, if we're going to change, modify the act, uh, I can imagine the debate right now in the Legislative Assembly. The training, uh, needs to be, uh, sufficient to make that, um, uh, appropriate. Uh, but with the appropriate training, I, I don't see why something like that couldn't happen. Um, with respect to, um, so, uh, one of the things that, that we, uh, are committed to is, is turning our, our, um, essentially creating a twenty-four-seven first responder system on mental health. So we have mental health response teams now that they work with the police, but they don't, uh, work twenty-four-seven. Um, and, uh, the police, talking to the police in Fredericton, uh, the chief in Fredericton, who I meet pretty regularly, he, he says this is a problem. When we've got them, it's great, but we need them twenty-four-seven. So I'm saying let's create a twenty-four-seven, uh, mental health response team to work with the police, um, to deal with a significant number of those, uh, cases. Um, the, the, the efforts in Saint John, the efforts in Moncton, and, and I'm not sure about Moncton, but Fredericton have worked well, but we need twenty-four-seven. And on the provincial jails, so here's the thing. What an opportunity in a way, when people in provincial jails, the jails are essentially in the care, let's say, of the province. The opportunity to set up a pathway for, for those who leave jail to help them, um, uh, move in new directions. Um, uh, housing, that'll be the first one. Get them housed coming out of jail. Um, and then deal with, um, whether it's mental illness, drug rehab, uh, trauma or whatever. But we need to have, uh, an institution, the institutional capacity to do that. It doesn't exist currently in government at any level, uh, but provincially, we need to have the capacity put in place institutionally to actually, um, ensure that those coming out of jail have those supports at that point and before, actually, when they're still incarcerated, so that there is an opportunity to, uh, help them move forward in, in a new way. And, uh, that's going to require some expertise, some resources and the right people. But, uh, there's a tremendous opportunity right there that we're missing.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you for your service and thank you to the candidates for stepping up.
Thank you very much. Merci beaucoup.
Bonjour et bienvenue au Centre Avenir. We are very happy that you could join us, uh, for this very, this special public session of Moncton City Council. It's not every day that we, we and the citizens of our city get to, uh, yeah, have such a great view, but also to, uh, hear from you on the, the issues that really concern us. Alors ce soir, nous voulons discuter la reforme fiscale municipale, logement, besoins sociaux et sécurité communautaire. We're really hoping that you can touch on those four topics in ten short minutes. You will get a warning at eight minutes with two remaining, and we will leave the final twenty minutes for questions from councils. So the floor is yours. Get away.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Merci tout le monde pour l'opportunité de présenter nos idées puis nos solutions pour vous autres. I really, I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to have the team here, to speak with you and to speak to your priorities and to give you a sense of what a whole government would be like as a partner for the city of Moncton. So we really appreciate the opportunity, particularly, I mean, council, Moncton Council has tackled some really challenging things in the last number of years, and you've done it in a way that's inspiring with, that I think has inspired us because it's been about partnership and collaboration. Vous êtes déterminés de vraiment se brancher dans les enjeux compliqués et le faire d'une façon transparente puis de le faire en façon collaborative. Alors, vous allez entendre des thèmes comme ça dans mon discours aujourd'hui. J'apprécie énormément le travail que vous avez fait dans la dernière année avec des enjeux vraiment difficiles. And I appreciate that you are working at this in ways that bring the public in and together to try and, and tackle these challenges. So the first thing that I want to talk about in terms of our approach is that it is a team approach. Uh, I am the fortunate one that gets to stand here, but I have incredible people on our team who care for this city deeply, who know this city well and who bring amazing experience and perspective to our work. So much of what I say here today has been informed by their knowledge of your community and their commitment to it. So I want to take a moment to introduce the team to you, if that's all right. I'm going to start on my left. We have our candidate for Moncton Northwest, Tanya Sodi. Après, on a le candidat pour Chandraye Irish Town, Lynn Chantal Boudreau. Euh, j'imagine que vous connaissez le député de Sheliak Kapakadi, le candidat pour Sheliak Kapakadi, ancien maire de Sheliak, puis notre propre parole pour le, euh, le gouvernement local, Jacques Leblanc. On a de ce côté-ci quelqu'un aussi que j'imagine que vous connaissez bien, un ancien conseillère de la ville de Moncton et le député de Moncton Centre puis notre propre parole en matière de, de santé, our health critic, Rob McKee. Next to him, we have our candidate for Moncton East, Alexandre Dussette. And on the far side, our candidate for Moncton South, Claire Johnson. So I'm really, really proud to have recruited these amazing people to our team. We think the work of government is a work of partnership in community, and it's these folks that are going to be in community, working with you and bridging the gap between municipal and provincial politics. So je vais commencer avec le changement que vous pouvez imaginer avec un gouvernement rôte parce que ça commence avec un changement du style de leadership puis un changement de l'approche du gouvernement. Notre style comme j'ai dit, c'est un travail d'équipe. We are focused on listening, on partnering and on decentralizing the work of government. There's too much that happens in Fredericton, in Chancery Place, uh, by civil servants who often aren't allowed out of the office, and Serge is smiling because he knows, well, he was one and we were there together. And so those aren't decisions being made on the ground in Moncton, but they impact Moncton. Uh, we get inspired by the slogan that we see from the disability community about nothing about us, without us. We believe that the next government needs to flip the model and get out of Fredericton and have community-led, government-supported initiatives. So for us, your priority is our priority. C'est, c'est votre priorité devrait être la priorité du gouvernement provincial. C'est pas nous autres de vous dire où placer l'école, où c'est quoi l'infrastructure prioritaire. Vous autres là sur le terrain, vous connaissez c'est quelle route qui ont besoin d'asphalt. C'est où l'école devrait aller. It's not for the provincial government to tell Moncton the best place to put a school. You know best where to put the school. And you need a partner that's going to recognize that that is your expertise. And when you say something's your priority number one, it should be the provincial government's priority number one for your community. That's what you'll get from a whole team. Municipalities are better equipped to deliver results on the ground efficiently. You're closer to the people, and we need to give you the tools to do that. We need to give you the authority and the fiscal means to do that. So I'm glad we're going to tackle municipal reform first because our team has been committed to municipal reform from the beginning. In fact, we thought it should have been done from the beginning, hand in hand, with broader municipal, municipal reform because the government dumped responsibilities and services on you without giving you the means to deliver against them. So our team is committed to a new fiscal framework, to a new funding formula that gives you the tools, the authority and the money to fuel the growth and tackle the challenges that you're facing. C'est quelque chose qu'on pense que c'est, c'est priorité que vous avez le moyen de vraiment régler les responsabilités qu'on vous avait données avec un nouveau arrangement fiscal. Alors, oui, c'est, c'est plus de, de, plus grand montant des revenus. Uh, it's more tax revenue that needs to come in to municipalities for, for you to tackle the challenges that you're going to face. So, yes, we are on board with municipal fiscal reform and doing it as quickly as possible. Yes, we are on board with the property tax assessment legislation and the changes that need to be made there. We actually want to do a complete overhaul of the property tax system because just trans, I shouldn't say just, but transferring one piece of tax today that isn't appropriately assessed or appropriately taxed to, to get a Band-Aid solution in place, we don't think that that's the right thing for the long term. We believe that we need to really overhaul our assessment process. We need to overhaul the property tax system, the categories that exist, the way that they're coupled. All of that needs to change so that our property tax system is a tool that drives the community that we want. It should incentivize the kind of development that we want to see. It should push us towards density and diversity. Alors pour nous, c'est la reforme des impôts fonciers vraiment important. Et on va le faire avec l'objectif d'avoir un système compétitif transparent. Puis ça doit être quelque chose qui est prévisible. On devrait savoir c'est quoi nos taxes avant qu'on reçoit nos, nos factures. It needs to be something that is competitive with our neighboring jurisdictions. Our property tax system needs to be transparent and understandable for everyone. It needs to be fair and affordable, and it has to move us forward toward the kind of society that we want to have. So that's something that we're really excited to tackle and to tackle quickly. It's work our team has already been doing. We've identified folks from municipalities, CAOs and others that want to be part of it. We're going to hit the ground running so that we can make it happen quickly, within the first six months. The new model should be identified so that we can operationalize it before the next tax bills come out. And we are open to the idea of, uh, an interim payment or adjustment for the fiscal year where we, you know, we can't in November rebuild the tax system and have that impact the bills in December. We could do something for twenty twenty-five as an interim measure before we roll out a new model come the end of the year that impacts the, the bills people will receive in January. Alors, je vais parler de logement parce que je, I don't have a timer here, so I'm just going to go. Logement, c'est un enjeu. Ben, on est ici à Moncton, vous connaissez l'enjeu de logement, de logement abordable et le manque de logement à New Brunswick. Il y a beaucoup, beaucoup de différentes choses dans cette solution que j'aimerais parler, mais reconnaissant que j'ai juste dix minutes. Je vais parler premièrement que un gouvernement rôte va enlever la portion provinciale du TBH pour le développement nouveau. We are committed to taking the PST off of new multi-residential developments, as you articulated in your paper. We are supportive of making the changes needed to allow for integrated housing, of addressing the Community Planning Act and the pieces that you want to see the authority transferred locally. That's two minutes? Okay. I'm going to go fast. And the, the, the point referenced around short-term rentals, we're totally prepared to be a partner on that. The next one was your social needs, and this is something that a number of members of my team are really passionate about. You'll be familiar with the fact that we have advocated for a mental health court time and time again. Rob has done amazing work in the Legislative Assembly, pushing for that mental health court to be in Moncton, so we are committed to that. On, on est alignés avec le besoin d'avoir des traitements pour la santé mentale résidentielle dans la communauté avec des facilités où vous pouvez recevoir des services. Ça ne devrait pas prendre quatre, cinq années pour ce lit-là. Alors, on va pousser pour ça. Puis aussi le partenariat avec l'école post-séculaire pour le main-d'œuvre, pour former les personnes qui peuvent faire ce travail sur le terrain avec les organisations communautaires. Nous autres, on veut vraiment voir ce main-d'œuvre-là qui, qui est développé avec l'université de Moncton, avec le collège communautaire, avec les autres partenaires, pour qu'il y ait du monde qui peut faire ce travail. And if I have enough time left, the fourth item, you're talking about public safety. So absolutely here to partner with you on changes to the Police Act so that you can serve your residents the way that you need to because municipalities deserve more. You deserve to have a provincial partner that's coming alongside you, not above you, top down, but alongside you to take your priorities and make them theirs and figure out how that government can support community-led solutions, government-supported, where we give you the tools to decide how you're going to grow your community. We give you the fiscal room to serve the people as you do best, efficiently, on the ground and the closest to them. So our government is going to be that decentralized partner that tailors solutions to your needs because the needs in Moncton are different from the needs in Memramcook. We've got to stop doing one-size-fits-all policymaking that happens in Fredericton, and we've got to leverage our local skills and local knowledge to deliver solutions that really meet your needs. Alors, nous autres sommes ici pour être partenaires là avec un gouvernement qui va vous écouter, qui va faire que votre priorité c'est la nôtre, qui va travailler en partenariat, euh, pour le futur.
Perfect. Merci beaucoup. Councillor Legere, would you like to ask a fiscal reform question?
Merci beaucoup. Um, uh, you've talked about fiscal reform and, and great to hear the commitment to that. Uh, and also seem to feel that the partnership with municipalities would be stronger under your government. I'm wondering though, for some, just for some clarity, with respect to, uh, municipalities, as you know, financially, um, we struggle at times with respect to being able to provide many services that we're not mandated to provide, but we do them. And so wondering with respect to the, um, provincial tax, um, on residential properties, for example, uh, or even a percentage of H- or even a percentage of HST, could that be returned to municipalities to help us? You said you were going to look at completely revamping, whether it be the assessments and so on. But to take a look at that. And lastly, your thoughts on the equalization formula? And it may not necessarily be as important in Moncton because of the growth, but it is in other municipalities. And how would you, I guess, deal with that and help out the municipalities?
Yeah, thanks, Charles. I appreciate the question. Our goal is to make sure that the city of Moncton has the tools and the funds it needs to deliver all of the services you need to, to your residents. So figuring out what that right category is, because we're going to be overhauling the property tax system and introducing not just residential, commercial, and industrial, but probably new categories of tax and new rates at which they'll be applied, which means the amount of money coming in is sort of different from what it is today. Then we have to transfer that money to municipalities to meet your needs and make sure that we are meeting your needs. So determining which ones cover the need, I think that we can do together. The goal is to make sure your needs are met. And if it's this one and this one and that one, and that's what gets transferred over, excellent. If I told you today it's going to be the residential tax, and then we change how we do residential tax and non-owner occupied and light industrial and others, and that figure changes, and all of a sudden there's a shortfall because it doesn't meet what you need, I'd like us to develop that together because the goal is that you have the fiscal room to serve your residents, and we want to put in place a solution to do that. The mention of HST is an interesting one because, you know, it's in the news these days that there's $450 million that are going to come out of the provincial revenues. I think our entire platform is not going to cost $450 million. So we think there's a lot of things that we can do with the property tax system to deliver you the means that you need to solve your problems. And if it isn't sufficient, then we figure out the next pieces. There was a second piece to your question there.
Equalization.
Thank you. Well, we definitely need a formula that is clear, fair, transparent. It's this trick between not one-size-fits-all, recognizing the differences between municipalities and needs and means and that sort of thing. So we have to work something out. But honestly, the Union of Municipalities has done some great work here. They have a team of people who have put together a proposal that is sound and based in a lot of good work on the ground and input from municipalities. So I think that that advice and recommended new way forward is ready to be adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Bourgeois on housing.
Merci, madame, madame Paul. Cinq questions pour vous, mais il y en a que vous avez déjà répondu donc je vais sauter. Mais merci d'avoir reconnu le manque de logement et le manque de logement abordable. Première question, est-ce que nous avons environ un tiers du centre-ville qui est formé par du stationnement unitage? Donc on aimerait se débarrasser de ça et qu'il y ait des constructions de logements en hauteur. Est-ce que vous permettriez à notre ville de charger une taxe sur les terrains sous-développés, notamment au centre-ville, pour ce salaire?
Hmm, mais je pense que c'est quelque chose vraiment intéressant parce que je pense qu'une de notre premières rencontres, moi puis la mère S. Arnold, elle parlait de tout, on était dans ton bureau puis tu dis: garde, garde! Tu peux compter tout le stationnement dans notre centre-ville. Et c'était un enjeu que vous m'avez présenté, ça fait deux ans passé. Et garde l'opportunité pour développer de logements où vous pouvez marcher à vos besoins, où vous n'avez pas peut-être besoin d'une voiture. Vous pouvez vivre d'une façon plus durable. Alors nous sommes vraiment intéressés de recevoir des solutions nouveaux et créatifs de municipalité comme ça. Vous n'êtes pas le seul qui sont intéressés à ce niveau-là. Alors pour nous autres, c'est comprendre qu'est-ce qu'on doit faire de notre côté pour vous laisser l'espace, de déterminer comment vous allez faire des incitatifs pour le développement et quelque chose comme ça. Si on a du terrain qui n'est pas développé à son plein potentiel, comment est-ce que notre système, au moment, notre système encourage qu'on laisse pas seulement nos terrains au centre-ville, mais même notre terrain d'agriculture, d'autres choses, on le laisse pas développer. Ça, c'est là où il y a eu la situation fiscale meilleure. Mais pour nous autres, on veut un province productif. Et si on a des terrains d'agricole, on devrait les utiliser. Si on a de l'espace pour avoir de logements, de logements abordables avec cette hauteur et cette...
Shoot, density?
Density, c'est vraiment densité, okay. Cette densité-là, ça c'est qu'est-ce qu'on veut. Alors vos propositions de comment vous pouvez faire ça et encourager ça, nous sommes là pour comprendre comment on peut le supporter.
Merci. Deuxième question, est-ce que vous réduiriez les délais de la stratégie Logement pour tous et augmentez les fonds pour le logement abordable au sein de cette stratégie?
Il y a beaucoup de changements qu'on aimerait faire aux stratégies Logement pour tous parce que qu'est-ce qu'on a vécu déjà? C'est beaucoup de bureaucratie, beaucoup de personnes qui ont été ajoutées à l'équipe, mais ils n'utilisent pas même le budget qui ont été donnés. Quand on a une crise qui a besoin d'une réponse avec d'urgence, et l'année dernière, je pense qu'ils ont laissé 29 millions de dollars sur la table, d'un budget de 30, 30 quelque chose millions. C'était pas, on pouvait pas comprendre comment ils ont pris tout leur temps pour assembler une équipe, mais ils n'ont pas fait du travail sur le terrain quand on a des projets là prêts et qu'il y avait un partenaire fédéral qui était prêt et il y avait un gouvernement provincial qui était comme une barrière à l'avancement des projets. Alors oui, on aimerait voir des choses qui bougent vraiment plus vite. Et on doit enlever ce travail de papasserie, ce travail de processus qui empêche nos projets à bouger à la vitesse qu'ils ont besoin parce que la capitale va bouger. On sait que la capitale va être investie dans des autres provinces, dans des autres places. Alors on doit bouger aussi pour attirer les projets qu'on veut.
Deux autres questions. Est-ce que vous adopteriez une loi régissant la location de courte durée? Vous n'avez peut-être pas été aussi spécifique.
Oui, oui, j'ai mentionné ça juste brèvement dans mon point d'oeuvre. Oui, on est là pour être partenariat pour les STAs, le short-term rental, logement de moins de durée, est-ce que c'est ça? C'est quelque chose d'intéressant qu'ils ont fait à la ville de Saint Andrews. Ils ont essayé des choses. On a vu des autres exemples dans des autres provinces où ils essaient d'utiliser des nouveaux moyens créatifs pour gérer leur communauté d'une façon qui ont une belle balance, belle balance de le type de logement qui sont là. Alors si vous avez déjà préparé une solution, un moyen de voir sortir le balance de développement que vous voulez, nous sommes là pour être un partenariat pour vous autres.
Avec une possibilité de venir la ville aussi. Merci. Ma dernière question, last one, needs a bit of a brief introduction. The province owns seven segregated units, housing units, in the city. Lewis Street, Auburn Circle, Joyce Street, there's seven of them. Unfortunately, these seven units are all segregated housing. This model was abandoned 50 years ago. We no longer do that, but those seven units remain. The city of Moncton recently established a committee with Rising Tide and NB Housing to explore how to transform the seven units from segregated to integrated or mixed housing developments. But unfortunately, NB Housing cannot collaborate in this effort unless it owns all of the units. The province thus is maintaining the unacceptable abandoned antiquated segregated. Question, will you change the rules governing NB Housing to allow it to integrate the seven units in Moncton?
So I don't want to pretend to be an expert on those seven units in that particular case, so I don't want to give anyone the wrong impression. But we are very interested in supporting integrated housing and a modernization of our rules around what can and can't be done because we've seen this with a number of projects where people have come up with new and creative ways to provide a different kind of housing that maybe doesn't have a stove. But oh no, the provincial rules say if it doesn't have a stove, we can't support it when it has communal food services that are perfect for that particular group of population that they're trying to serve and supportive resources that come in to help manage. But our rules have always said you have to have a stove or else. And so we have to modernize those rules. We have to get rid of 50-year-old segregated solutions or archaic pieces of bureaucracy that restrict the diversity of development we need to serve the diverse needs of New Brunswickers that need to be housed. So we're really interested in figuring out how, what do we need to terminate or cancel or undo or change how it's written in order to support integrated housing opportunities? And if it's for those seven specific units, then let's figure out what do I need to edit and does it need to go through the Legislative Assembly in order to give the tools to deliver the kind of housing that Monctonians deserve?
Merci beaucoup.
Thank you. Counselor Crossman on social issues.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for being here today. Good to see you, Rob, Alexandre, Claire, and Jacques. The other two candidates, I don't know yet. One of them lives in my neighborhood, who I've asked to meet with, but I haven't had a chance to meet with yet. So it would be very interesting because I have a pretty good understanding of what's going on in the municipal world. So my question to you is basically, and the deputy mayor has, Deputy Mayor Terrio is going to have the key question later on to ask you. But tonight, can you confirm that you would commit to building an inpatient stabilization and rehab center in Moncton for the most acute cases of mental health and addiction? Because we all understand that mental health and addiction is what's basically taking over the streets of Moncton right now. And that responsibility, as we know, lies with, not the city of Moncton, relies with the province, but so on and so forth. So I'm not sure what that would look like, but I'd like to know your party's position on a rehab center and stabilization. And we talk about the most acute, but the most acute, there's people that also need help that are not the most acute, right? So I mean, there's different levels of homelessness, there's different levels of addiction and mental health. So if you could answer that, that would be great. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Crossman. That's a big question because there are a lot of people who need a lot of help and a lot of different kinds of help. So in the first instance, we are absolutely committed to having more residential treatment opportunities in Moncton. And there's very specific words that you use there in terms of inpatient facilities for acute folks. And so I don't know if that definition and our idea of residential treatments, if they marry, because this was the first time I had heard that expression. So I want to make sure I understand what technicalities are attached to that definition. But our broad goal is to make sure there are places where people can get that kind of 24/7 residential-supported treatment in this community. And then we also have to look at the stages as you move out from there. So I talked about having the kind of people who can support in community in partnership with our organizations that are sort of housing these people and people on a temporary basis in different forms of shelter across the city. We have to look even further upstream at how we are supporting kids in school with access to mental health. We know that the number of guidance counselors and school psychologists is really low, and kids are struggling to access mental health supports. And we know that people who find themselves experiencing homelessness often first started that at a young age, in their twenties, is common for people experiencing homelessness now. So we've got to get at the front end of it to try to address that while also offering those fully supported clinical environments to support people that are looking for a path to recovery and wanting that. And those environments may look a little different, right? There's clinical environment A and clinical environment B. And the folks, you mentioned some of them, folks at Rising Tide, folks that we've worked with at different centers. You need different models to reach and support different people. So we have to have that full spectrum there. But we are committed to more residential beds that provide full support for someone to transition into recovery and then have access to the types of transitional housing and supportive housing and then autonomous housing as they move through that journey to then being eligible to work and ready to reintegrate completely. Awesome. Counselor Kingston.
Thank you, Madame Madas. Welcome, Susan. Welcome. Good to see you again. And again, to follow up on Counselor Crossman's question, obviously, they have nowhere to go at the bottom at the end of the day, and that's a well-worn, well-worn statement. The city has become home to the homeless, many of whom suffer again from mental health and addiction issues. And if anybody reads the newspapers, The Atlantic Downtown's Association recently came out, I think last week, with a public story saying they're basically pleading, asking, requesting all levels to help them get the hearts of the cities back because it's the heart, it's the vibrant, beating heart of our city downtown. So the necessary funding is the question tonight, Mrs. Holt, providing the necessary funding for an in-community rehab. It has other names, and wraparound services. Wraparound, of course, meaning mental health professionals to help out. That's the question. Will you support the funding on that?
Yeah, that's exactly the goal, is to provide you funding that lets you meet needs and also to partner, like we say, with things like that residential treatment facility supporting the educational side of making sure the workforce are there. Things like mobile clinics that serve to provide support to folks who are in between stages on the journey. We almost need a SWAT team approach. It's almost like an EMO approach, right? You know, when an emergency happens and the emergency measures organization kicks into gear, and there's people there coordinating and everything is moving. The city of Moncton has taken steps to try to do that, to bring partners to the table, to put action groups together, to get all of the partners there, and hasn't had, I think, the partnership at the provincial level to drive these solutions all the way through to the end. So we are absolutely here to take that, that approach, that this is a crisis. It needs emergency management with a SWAT team of folks that have the authority to cut through the red tape and the barriers and get the solutions moving faster than they normally would. We've all seen it, right? We've seen how long it's taken to get a residential treatment facility here in Moncton when that commitment to those beds was made years ago. And the time it's taken to go through an RFP and land acquisition and to look at, you know, governments moving at a molasses pace. And if we were partnering with communities to allow that to happen, I know it would have happened a lot more quickly than it has now. So we need to make sure the right people are doing the right jobs and that the government's rule to take away the barriers and provide the funding to get those spaces and facilities in place. It's what we have to do to address a crisis that is now impacting downtowns, companies, workers, residents, and the health and well-being of our entire province.
We would expect all our MLAs in whichever party to support us on that because they live here, work here, and they're part of the dilemma as well. They're part of the process and the solution. So we certainly hope they're going to be supporting us in that way. Thank you, Madame Madas. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Terrio.
No, up is on. Vous m'entendez?
Oui.
Donc bonsoir, merci d'avoir accepté notre invitation. Bonsoir à votre équipe aussi. Donc comme vous le savez sans doute, le dossier des enjeux sociaux n'est pas de juridiction municipale. Mais comme vous le savez, c'est devenu presque une priorité pour notre ville. Donc sur cette question, est-ce que vous assumerez la responsabilité première, les soins et de la réduction du nombre et sans-abri dans notre collective?
La responsabilité pour soigner les Niérans et Croix-Népresécoises, c'est la responsabilité du gouvernement provincial. C'est notre responsabilité d'assurer que tout le monde a accès à la soin dont ils ont besoin, où ils ont besoin et quand ils l'ont besoin. Alors ça, c'est un focus pour nous autres puis on entend ça à chaque jour que on a besoin de transformer notre système de soins de santé parce que c'est pas les hôpitaux qui peut tout faire, même que au moment, c'est les hôpitaux qui reçoivent tous. Les gens qui sont sans-abri, le monde avec des crises de santé mentale, avec des crises de toxicomanie, et les gens qui ont des crises de santé personnelle, ils seront tous dans l'hôpital parce qu'on n'a pas les cliniques communautaires avec les équipes pluridisciplinaires qui peut livrer les services de soins primaires et préventifs pour la communauté. Alors nous autres, ça c'est une priorité numéro un d'assurer qu'on a ces cliniques-là dans nos communautés. Ici à Moncton, on a une clinique prévue parce qu'on a fait un promesse pour 30 cliniques communautaires primaires dans les communautés. Moncton va être une place qui reçoit un des premiers dans le premier an de notre mandat. On va faire dix dans le premier an pour assurer qu'on a ces places qui vont servir les 180 000, 180 000 Niérans et Croix qui n'ont pas accès et aussi, on aimerait agrandir le service pour que tout le monde ait une place proche à la maison qui est ouverte quand ils l'ont besoin, sans-abri et d'autre. Parce que si on peut soigner le monde, c'est la responsabilité du gouvernement provincial pour faire ce travail-là. En partenariat avec la municipalité pour déterminer c'est où la meilleure place. Il va y avoir plus qu'une, j'imagine. Alors c'est où les meilleures places pour les placer? Peut-être en lien avec les autres infrastructures communautaires parce qu'on a vu que si on les met avec des écoles, c'est une excellente partenariat. Si on les met dans des infrastructures communautaires, ça peut vraiment bien aller. Alors on veut avoir... Alors on veut avoir des communautés qui sont saines, qui ont toute l'opportunité pour vraiment vivre un bien-être. Alors ce travail de placement et de déterminer où ces cliniques communautaires devraient aller. Ils ont besoin aussi d'avoir des conseillers de santé mentale. Quand on parle d'une équipe pluridisciplinaire, c'est pas seulement des médecins de famille, les infirmières praticiennes, c'est des conseillers en santé mentale, c'est des travailleurs sociaux qui peut vraiment servir n'importe quoi c'est l'enjeu du patient qui vient avec la bonne personne au bon moment.
C'est un problème mondial, donc c'est pas un problème unique au niveau Brunswick. Donc la prévention, on devrait mettre beaucoup plus d'en face sur la prévention. Est-ce que vous voulez me parler un peu?
Oh oui. Oui, j'aimerais parler de deux choses qu'on veut faire pour vraiment améliorer la prévention de santé. Une, c'est au niveau communautaire parce qu'on a besoin d'avoir des espaces et de l'infrastructure pour la récréation, pour socialiser ensemble, pour les années, pour les jeunes, pour tout le monde. Ces espaces-là, ces infrastructures-là, pour attirer une population active puis qui sont engagées. Ça, c'est vraiment important pour la santé préventive. Mais on a aussi un nouveau programme qu'on a annoncé de nourriture alimentaire scolaire que nous autres, on pense, si tu peux aider les jeunes qui viennent à l'école aujourd'hui sans de petit déjeuner, avec leur sac vide, avec pas de repas. Ils peuvent apprendre puis ils peuvent pas créer des habitudes de bien-être pour leur vie. Si on peut commencer avec les jeunes, de donner la nourriture saine ici de Nouveau-Brunswick, ces habitudes-là, ils vont être en meilleure santé. Ils peuvent apprendre, ils peuvent réussir dans un environnement scolaire d'une façon meilleure. Et il peut avoir une vie en belle santé pour plus long. On voit ça parce que c'est la société de care heart and stroke qui nous demande pour cet programme, c'est la société médicale qui demande pour cet programme. Ils nous disent le meilleur investissement dans la santé préventive, c'est la nourriture en école pour chaque jeune. Alors ça, c'est quelque chose que notre équipe va faire. Un petit déjeuner universel puis un paiement volontaire pour le repas du midi dans chaque école, chaque école. Au moment, c'est dans quelques écoles, mais pas tout le monde. Alors pour nous autres, on veut un système équitable et engagé avec la communauté parce qu'on a beaucoup de belles organisations sans but lucratif qui fait ce travail sur le terrain maintenant avec des bénévoles, avec des levées de fonds. Nous autres, on pense que chaque élève devrait avoir l'opportunité, une équité d'avoir les résultats en leur école puis aider leur famille avec l'abordabilité aussi. Il y a plusieurs familles qui vivent dans un stress parce qu'ils doivent décider s'ils vont payer leurs factures d'électricité ou s'ils vont rendre leurs jeunes en école avec quelque chose à manger. Et cet stress, ce n'est pas bon pour leur santé non plus. Ils se trouvent dans des situations difficiles. Ils font des choix difficiles au niveau de leur santé, leur nourriture. Alors notre équipe est vraiment fière de proposer une solution qui aide avec l'abordabilité, qui aide avec les enjeux dans l'école parce qu'il y a beaucoup de stress avec nos enseignants, et qui commence une vie de bien-être avec les jeunes qui peut apprendre et développer des habitudes de nourriture locale pour cette santé, that preventative health que vous parlez.
Excellent. We need to move on to our final questions. Sorry, Counselor Butler, again. You're squished in. I'm hoping you can do it in like three to four minutes.
Well, last time was four, and now I'm down to three. Thank you, team. City of Moncton is going through a terrible time with crime rates. Stats Canada says between in 2021 that we were the third highest in Canada. And that is not something that we're proud of. One of the things is that we have, our CMP costs have gone up 40% from 23.4 million to 32 million. We've had to hire more community safety officers to try to deal with the bylock situation here in the city of Moncton, and that's gone up 230%. So we're really feeling it. So when you talk about the changes of the Police Act to empower our community safety officers, we really have to hold everybody to that commitment. We have to visit it, even if it's as a team that we sit down and go over it, to give them more, for sure, they'll need more training, more qualifications. But we still have to get to another level of policing. We can't depend, the cost of our CMP is just, well, you're hearing it all over the province. So it's not just from us. Also, what you mentioned about the mental health court. I don't know, you know, I'm a kind of a data guy, and I don't know how well that's worked in St. John. It was there for a while. I think it shut down. I'm not sure. But I think that, you know, it's a great thing to have, but we're going to have to change the rules and regulations to it because it is not working the way it is now, for sure. And also, my final one is, is the provincial correction centers, like two years less a day, they go to provincial jail. And then when they're in there, we find a lot of them soon as they're getting out, they're just dropped off onto the streets, and we have to deal with them again. We go back to our 230% increase in community safety officers. But we have to, even in them two years, two years less a day, we have to make sure that they can get their GED. It's important, education is the most important thing that we can give to them. Job skills when they get out, any other type of program that we can help them transport back to the community and try to give something instead of just falling back to where they were before. So please.
Thank you very much for, there's, I think, three questions in there. So I'm going to try to get at each of them if I can. And I appreciate how you started, that Moncton is seeing the impacts of crime more than most communities in our province and in Canada. And you need the tools to be able to tackle this. And in some cases, you're prevented to doing so by legislation. So when I say we're committed to changing the Police Act, we absolutely are because we cannot continue with the status quo. It's not working. We think we need to do a more comprehensive review of policing in New Brunswick. Some of that work's already underway because different communities have different needs. And we're trying to do some blanket things or not allowing different local solutions, regional solutions, and others to take place. I know the situation in Moncton is quite unique with the direct contract with the RCMP. But as you say, the expenses and the reality on the ground of what you need from community policing is not enabled by that right now. So we've got to make sure that the Police Act reflects the right powers, the right resources to serve the challenges that you're facing in community. I want to talk about the mental health court for a minute because the model in St. John actually has been working. So the reason why it paused was because the justice left who was trained in that model. And it took some time to find another justice who had the skills and the experience to deliver the model of a mental health court. But it results in much lower recidivism. It results in better outcomes for the community as well as that person because you're bringing all the relevant people around the table to support the person with a solution that isn't just straight to five weeks or five days or two years minus a day in a facility in the province that might not do anything to address their mental health issues and the things that are causing them to offend. And so we've seen really positive results in St. John. That program is back up and running. And all data shows that the folks who experience a mental health court pathway are less likely to offend again, and it costs less to deliver that model. So we're really excited to put it in place in Moncton because the needs are great here. And it's a matter of having the right people available to do that. And the access to talent is a challenge. We have a shortage of people who have experience in social work and in mental health counseling and in this piece of the justice system. So we've got to make sure those people are there to deliver it because it is a better pathway than going through a traditional court system that is not cut out to handle people who are struggling with mental health crises. Now, the third point that you made was, oh, oh, gosh. This is something that we're seeing more and more is that people are essentially being released into homelessness, released into an environment where they're so much more likely to reuse and to offend because we have done virtually nothing to support or rehabilitate them. And I loved what you said about education because education is the great equalizer, right? It's the tool that gives folks a chance to go out and take a different path. But when you're dropped off at the gate with a garbage bag and no transportation, no place to live, maybe you're, I've heard in some cases, you're given a tent. We're not setting people up for success. And we need our system to learn from models. The federal model is a bit stronger. They start rehabilitation day one. And it's in partnership with people who know how to build that pathway. But they can't be, and we do this at our hospitals as well, right? People are discharged from hospitals into homelessness and back into those addiction environments. And so we have to have stronger supports in those environments before we release people to really vulnerable conditions.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your service. Thank you to your candidates for stepping up and really appreciate all of your input.
Lee, I mean, any one of these folks would have been happy to jump up and answer these questions as well because I have an incredible team. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you and everyone who's interested in this election. It's a really important election. I think there's a lot of changes to be made. I believe we have the team to do it. And I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Merci beaucoup.
Thank you.
Merci.
So at this time, we're just waiting for the premier. So any minute, he will be here. I see him coming. All right. Well, welcome. Merci d'être ici au Centre Avenue. Bienvenue. We're very happy that you could all be here with us tonight. It's not every day that our citizens have the opportunity to hear about the issues that are really important in our community that have, you know, provincial responsibility. So really happy to have you here, just to go over some of the ground rules tonight. We're hoping you can give us about 10 minutes. Actually, I'll give you an eight-minute warning on the topics that we'd like to discuss tonight, including fiscal reform, housing, social needs, and community safety. So, Mr. Premier, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Worship. Merci. Bonsoir. It is great to be here tonight. So I thank you for the invitation. Thank you for the opportunity. Before I start, I certainly would like to recognize my colleagues that are here with me today. So we have the Honorable Ernie Steves from Moncton Northwest, Honorable Sherry Wilson from Albert River View, the Honorable Greg Turner, Moncton South, Palo Andretti, Moncton East, David Malonson, Moncton Center, and I believe, no, he's not here, I don't think, Rob Weir, candidate for River View. And then we have René Fiston, who's not here yet. So while I'd like to get into details, certainly in each of those categories, I think we have to understand, kind of, and we all do appreciate, that we're experiencing the pain of growth. We are experiencing growth in our province that we have never seen before. We have about 100,000 more citizens today in New Brunswick, gone from over 760 to 860,000. And Moncton is certainly leading that way in the country. I think we're the largest per capita increase in two years running now. So we're certainly seeing that in all areas. But through it all, I think I want to reference certainly where we are provincially. When we started in, we looked very closely. I remember one of the very first things we did was related to helping businesses and making it and looking at the WorkSafe situation where our WorkSafe premiums were $265,000. They're now $118,000, the lowest east of Saskatchewan, I think, lowest in the Maritimes by far. And allowing businesses able to operate easier and cheaper and more effectively while at the same time protecting employees. So as you know, we've had six balanced budgets, and we will continue with that. So I think there hasn't been that record in this province for a long, long time. We went through cycles of governments for every four years, for 20 years. So this is the first time there's been some continuity. Mind you, our first year was in a flood. The second year, we get into the pandemic for two years and then certainly got into rebuilding the province. So while most, you know, people will talk about, well, Higgs, you know, he's all about money. My goal is all about getting better results for the taxpayers' dollars. So when I talk about getting results, it's about how do I deliver them? And how do we work together as a team to deliver them in each community and do it effectively? So when we talk about having a surplus, that has saved 90 million in interest payments this year alone. All that money has gone into the social services, into health, into education. In fact, we've had the largest increase in health budget in the history of the province, where a billion dollars more a year now than we were before. 2.9 to 3.9. So anyone that says, give me more money, put more money in health, it's going to get better. I would beg to differ. Doing health differently is going to make it better. And the priority for us right now, in addition, you know, to maintain and ensuring we're competitive with salaries for nurses and doctors, is an information management system. An information management system to identify our entire capabilities within our province. So we can work together to deliver the best healthcare. And when you look across the province, you say, how do we create a system where the patient first is the strategy? So a doctor who can't deliver a service, maybe here in Moncton, maybe they could get it in Bathurst, maybe they could get it somewhere else in the province. And anywhere else could come here. It's the idea of knowing and having that information that can be utilized so the patient can carry from one jurisdiction to another as needed. But more importantly, to be dispatched to those jurisdictions in order to actually get a service in a timely manner. I also think we should get into a patient guarantee type of a program. And it's not good enough. And I want to use a little example, and I got to be careful here in terms of, it's not to identify any particular facility, but it's saying, it was a case where a requirement was needed and at the time, it was told that, well, there wasn't an operating was needed and in the at the time it was told that, well, there wasn't an operating, you know, room available to do the biopsy. And my question was, well, was there availability in a hospital 10 minutes or 20 minutes down the road or two hours down the road or three hours down the road? And there was a blank stare. So, you know, you'd say, if it was a critical care requirement, why would we not be using our entire network in order to deliver it? Because critical care should not wait. And and that's where a managed system comes into play. And from the beginning, I've talked about managing services better. So it's an easy thing to tax more and spend more and say we're getting better because we're spending more. And from the very beginning of my foray into this, I've talked about the results versus how much money is being spent. So I can talk about, yeah, we spent 35, 35% more in health. We spent roughly the same in social services and education, about 32% more. And that's before our population has grown by nine to 10,000 in our school systems. You mentioned in your report about the, you know, the number of peribles. How do you keep up to growth like we're we're seeing? And when you talk about buildings and saying, can we more, you've 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 set the bar high here in terms of the the number of projects on the go. But but in relation to that, it's a case of how much more can we build? I've had builders tell me, you know, we the costs are so high because we don't have the the skill sets, the number of contractors to actually build more. And and the ones that are bidding are bidding really high right now because the demand is so great. And that's the challenge that we are facing. But I mentioned today earlier, and I want to make this very clear, something else. So again, we will continue. The HST reduction is some way, again, to give everyone $1,000 as minimum tax reduction, tax relief, but also to look at that across the entire network. But today, we were yesterday, we were told that we were going to receive 4,600 new asylum seekers. We have 400 in the province right now, and that has tripled in the in the last few years. Now, we were just told that by the Department of Immigration federally two days ago. And we went back and said, what are the details on that? Where are they coming from? And it looks like it's a new model, they've said, that's going to be a proportional thing because Ontario and Quebec were complaining that they were having such an increase in asylum seekers. But what makes it even more dramatic is that these folks have not gone through any immigration assessment at this point. So we don't know whether they're legitimate or not legitimate. They've come into the country, and here they are. There's no suggestion that there's going to be any resources follow that because the last increases there were not. But even if there were resources in terms of money, we don't have the capability to find housing to meet those needs. And so there lies the challenge, and we're pushing back on that right now in relation with working with the federal government and saying, these folks need to go through the the whole assessment process and understand our least legitimate asylum seekers. Because we all have a compassion for helping people that need help, but we must understand the difference. And and so it can't be just a simple download from the federal government. Now, we've experienced, you know, lots of that. I know that as we've talked about the the, you know, different aspects of the growth and expenses you've had here, you mentioned on your report about the the security issue. We've hired 50, I think we're in now at about 50, 60 new RCMP officers. You've doubled yours from up to 19. And and we know what that issue is on the street. We know what the homeless situation is. We know what the drug situation is. We want visibility across the entire province into the, you know, there's there's illegal activities happen. There's a major drug bust here just 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 recently. And and so the the focus that we have is on a mental health and addiction treatment program, you know, one that be basically if you're convicted or you're on the street, if you're in a situation where you can't help yourself, but you're a risk to others and yourself, then we find a compassionate care intervention program, you know? And I'm going to use an example here for me. Is in St. John back last winter, we had two fatalities from fires. And and, you know, it it just I called, I called the father whose daughter was lost, 27 years old, been in and out of treatment centers for for some time. And, you know, of course, it was it was government's fault. And and do we have the right services to deal with mental health addictions? Our hospitals are not equipped to do that. Can we move that right out of the hospital so we actually have mental health and addiction treatment centers? Can we say, you know, I can't just walk on by when someone's laying on the street corner and they're unconscious and it's freezing out and they can't even respond to me, let alone tell me yes or no? How do we find compassion in walking on by? So we're talking about a path that brings people to a long-term addiction recovery program, not a life on drugs. I don't think there's any safe heroin injection. We've made it very clear that we will not support new new injection facilities. We'll assess with the communities, the existing ones, what impact are they having? Are they helping anyone? Are they hurting more people than they're helping? Are people getting better? Are we saving lives? Do we have another way? So we've been pretty clear that our focus is to make a difference and to make the decisions that make that difference. And the reason we're running six balanced budgets is because we've done we've done that, we've demonstrated it. And we can talk about what others did, what opportunities had we had in this province. But every province in the country did not manage through what we saw over the COVID, over the time, and at the same time, managed through with maintaining a balanced budget and reducing taxes. We took about 370 million off of the taxes. So we have choices to make in this election. And a choice in this election is we can continue on a progress that is demonstrated. It's not hype. It's not, I don't have to sit here and make up stories about what we're going to do differently, what we're going to do better. I can tell you what the priorities are, and I can tell you what we're going to work on, the decisions we're going to make to make a difference. But you already know we're capable of making decisions, and we're not afraid to make decisions. And yes, it causes disruption. And that sounds like my bell's up. Is that it? So, yeah, my bell's just been rung? Is that it? All right. Okay, fair enough.
Thank you. We'd like to give council the opportunity to ask some questions now. And first up is Councilor Legere on municipal fiscal reform.
Thank you very much, Mr. Premier. As you know, a lot of issues have arisen in the last number of years related, whether it's increased police costs, social costs, the things that we're seeing with with homelessness, the monies that, for example, city council awarded in in the amount of $6 million that you as a provincial government matched for rising tide. But we're really struggling as municipalities, and that's across the province. And so it's important you began the municipal reform and and thanks, thank you for doing that. Now we're wondering with respect to the financial portion of the municipal reform as we try to come to grips with the extra services that citizens are asking us to deliver that are really not something that the municipality is equipped nor responsible for. So we're wondering with respect to the notion of you, your party considering a transfer, for example, a property tax to the municipality, possibly a percentage of HST. And also would like to know, I guess, the commitment of if you're going to move towards a financial reform, can that be done before January 1st, 2026? And finally, as part of that, there is a lot of discussion on the equalization formula. And depending on the municipality, it means more who some than others. And so it would be nice to maybe understand what your party can bring to support municipalities like Moncton and Fredericton and all the municipalities in New Brunswick with with these challenges.
So fair enough, councillor, and I did read the the comments certainly in the Moncton Matters document. And and I and I appreciate the challenges that we're facing in Moncton, more so because of the the population. I mean, I think the assessments that we've seen in in property taxes, and and I think that's brought revenue to every community. I think Moncton, it's about 30 million or something of that range. But I this fiscal reform, what I want to say about that in this fiscal reform and analysis is everything is on the table. It is a full assessment of what it takes for a community to be self-sufficient. So we're not hiding behind something. We're not trying to trying to, you know, push push additional services on the communities. We know the challenges. I I'd say in many ways, you you can lead the charge on this because you're seeing the challenges bigger than any community in the province. But we're feeling the same kind of everywhere in terms of the growth. So on the timeline for this, you know, what we marked out is okay. And I and I was actually asking questions about, are we going to be able to expedite this in any way, based on what your report had said? And and so I know that that, you know, I'm going to make an assumption that we continue and we're able to keep moving in the progress that we've seen and in the and what we're the Brunswick is feeling. If if that is the case, we'll be able to meet with the local government on on the in in November, and we'll be able to lay out the timelines right then of how fast we can move. Now, if if we were able to make the difference and and implement this, because because I don't know what extent it is, and you probably can tell me how the some of the discussions maybe are going or if they're meeting your satisfaction now. But we would call legislation in early in order to do it early if if we're ready with the facts and the details of what's required. So I I can't, you know, just say that arbitrarily. I have to say, in November, if we find that the path is clear and what municipalities need, and and I'd like to think that negotiations, discussions will carry on with the bureaucrats all the while that we're out so that we can hit the ground running and we can follow up on what we've been doing. Because, you know, training wheels are gone. We don't, we don't need training wheels. We've we've been through this, and I've been through it for a while now. And the job never gets done. I appreciate that. But there's some huge issues that are going to impact the future of our province. Fiscal reform is one. Every region having self-sustainability, stability and financially, and and the regions all rising to be have the same amenities throughout the province in the 12 different regions so that people can move around our province and and all municipalities can grow accordingly. So I don't know if that's a commitment you're hoping for, but but I do believe that we would seriously look at it, and I'd say to the point where I'd call legislation early. But I I can't say I'm optimistic that would happen. But I'd like to meet as many challenges as as you're laying out there.
Well, thank you. And in the realization that it this is a huge priority for all municipalities and and certainly the the earlier the better. And thank you for that commitment of of wanting to move forward in November and so on. Thank you.
Merci au sujet de logement, conseiller Boussoir.
Merci beaucoup, madame. Merci, Premier Ministre. You said you mentioned the pain of growth. So I have five questions on housing. Je vais poser les quatre premières en français.
Ah oui?
La crise du logement. Il manque du logement. Il manque.
Au moment, s'il vous plaît.
Je reprends ou? Do I start over?
Okay. There, no, go ahead.
There's a crisis. Il y a une crise du logement. Il manque du logement à cause de la croissance démographique. Il manque du logement abordable. L'équivalent de l'inflation qui augmente. J'ai cinq questions pour vous. La première, est-ce que vous élimineriez l'impôt foncier sur les propriétés résidentielles non occupées? Et deuxièmement, la TBH sur les nouvelles résidences multiples pendant les deux prochaines années comme ça a été fait à Lille du Princée de Rire et à Nouvelle Écosse?
No, I don't think so. I've met with I met with different builders, and I said, how many more units could you build if we took off the property tax, PSC on buildings? And and the I didn't get any commitment they could build more. I didn't get a commitment that that money would flow to the tenants. And so the the purpose was, okay, so what does it mean? What it means is $170 million in terms of revenue to the province. I'm getting some feedback there. And in relation to that, so we're focused on, okay, if builders know that the HST is actually going to be reduced, then they see that as a long term and what it means to them in terms of their financing. But the other piece about that is the the actual double tax consideration. Now, we started double tax reduction in 2012. It was canceled in 2014. We put it brought it back in 2018, and it is no longer double tax. It's a it's a tax and a half. It's 1.5. So can we continue in doing that? We are now doing an assessment of where our taxation levels match up with with, like, Nova Scotia, because I'm very interested in comparative analysis so that we're not disadvantaged. And and that's in every category. Where can we best in class? And and so would I do something there if I find that our numbers are out of whack for other other jurisdictions that we're we're competing with and trying to maintain our? Absolutely. But but I I at this point, that is not a budgetary item, but I would tell you that it's a consideration as we do comparators. And through this fiscal reform, I'm hoping there will be lots of comparators that we can we can use to learn from. But I would say our record on that was clear. We did deal with it. It was canceled. We brought it back, and we finished it at 1.5 until kind of we see where revenue is land. And and what if I just could go on a little bit on where revenue is land? What we're seeing on revenue side is HST, HST spending, discretionary spending in many cases, which is kind of surprising, you know, with the and and on the affordability program we had, we had only 25% of the people eligible that participated. And what it required was like a five or 10-minute application and a verification of your your income from last year. And and so it was surprising that that it didn't have a higher takeout. So with the HST spending, the idea is that so we're seeing revenue kind of peak, and we're saying, okay, is it starting to drop a little bit? Because if I think of Newfoundland, and I think of when the revenues on the offshore royalties were high, the Newfoundland bureaucratic spending and government just ballooned. Well, then, all of a sudden, when the bottom dropped out of that, there they were, high and dry. We've been very careful, working with the Mr. Finance and going through these issues and saying, look, we don't want to get caught. And all of a sudden, the the population looks at it and say, well, hold it, how did we get here? Well, they would get there from not matching up your revenue expectations with your expense recommendations. So we will be monitoring that as we go through the election. You won't see this, I mean, our big election commitment is making it cheaper for people to live here, and that's the reduction in the HST.
Deuxième question.
Ah oui?
Environ un tiers de la superficie du centre-ville, c'est des stationnements clos surface. Pour maximiser l'utilisation du terrain au centre-ville surtout, pour développer des résidences à multiples étages, est-ce que vous permettriez à notre ville de charger une taxe sur les terrains sous-développés, notamment au centre-ville?
You know, that's an interesting, interesting require. I read that in the so would we consider that? Yes. And how would that work? I don't know. But I think that there's a that would be very much dependent on what the municipality thought worked best for them, because I I think that is something in municipal jurisdiction. And how can we aid aid that solution? So you tell me.
Okay. Merci. Troisième question. Vous avez une stratégie de logement pour tous. Est-ce que vous seriez prêt à réduire les délais qu'on rencontre par rapport à cette stratégie-là? Et est-ce que vous augmenteriez les fonds pour le logement abordable au sein de cette stratégie-là?
So I missed the first part. I just didn't go in clear in the first part.
You you have a, what is it, a affordable?
Affordable housing program. And would we would we, yes, would we, yes?
And the strategy has a lot of bureaucratic hurdles, and it's not as.
Streamlined as it should be.
Streamlined as it should be, let's say.
Yeah.
But second part was, would you increase the funding for affordable housing within that strategy?
Merci. Bonne question. Yes, yes, we would. There are there are roadblocks in that process, and we do need to move quickly, more quickly. And we've set up the first NB Housing in 40 years. So it wasn't even in existence. And so it's moving too slow for me, too. And and I think that there is a way both on the permitting side, you know, with with the municipality and and the side in government of of moving forward with subsidies. Because what we're seeing, and I guess here lies kind of the, again, trying to map out the path. So what we're seeing to be is that, and and builders are telling me there's a sweet spot, and it could be obviously different at different municipalities, but the sweet spot where people will pay a certain rent, and then then if it goes over that, they they can't rent them, and they're they're seeing higher vacancies. Now, we're not at a level where we get a lot of vacancies right now, and certainly not here. But but I guess the point is, if we are able to build enough to get the vacancies, and we're on that hump where we've got, you know, places two and three years out, one year to come online, then it's a case where rent will come down because vacancies will go up. But would we subsidize in the meantime to make it affordable? Because affordable housing is our challenge. And those units that people had and lived in, and some on the homeless right now, are because they simply couldn't afford to be there. And so there's a balance of, okay, who's who's on the street? Why are they on the street? And then when we find people that just couldn't afford to live in their home, and some of the rules and regulations we've made on on different dwellings, I think, within the municipalities, it's like, how do we how do we make that better? And that includes a subsidized program for affordable housing.
Okay. Deux autres questions. Est-ce que vous adopteriez une loi régissant la location de courte durée, short-term rentals, qui comprendrait un régime fiscal avantageux pour les municipalités?
Yes, so that's kind of like an Airbnb kind of discussion, right? And and so I did ask a few questions about that when when I read this comment. And I I think we do need to look at that. I I really think that that should be part of the fiscal reform. It should be understood. How big an issue is that? What is the what is the concern? And how much of a loss is it for businesses that are are competing? So there is a need to address kind of a new situation that didn't exist 10 years ago.
Okay. Final question in English.
Not on this, not this.
But this needs.
But this needs a little brief introduction. The province owns seven subsidized housing units in the city, such as the Lewis Street, Auburn Circle, and Joyce Avenue. Unfortunately, these seven units are all segregated housing units. That model was abandoned 50 years ago. The city of Moncton recently established a committee with Rising Tide and the New Brunswick Housing to explore how to transform the seven units from segregated developments to integrated or mixed developments. Unfortunately, NB Housing cannot collaborate in this effort unless it owns the units. The province is thus maintaining the unacceptable, abandoned, antiquated, segregated model. My question is, will you change the rules governing NB Housing to allow it to integrate its seven units presently in the city?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'll compare that to what we did with cataract surgeries. You know, the whole back on a doctor's office and not being able to do cataract surgeries was because in the, in the Health Act governing the RHAs, basically, these surgeries had to be performed within a facility owned by Horizon or Vitality. And they said, well, what difference does that make? And doctors were saying, well, I can do this in my office, and I can do a lot more than I can with all the procedures required in a hospital. So that was, we changed the legislation to do that. And so that would seem very similar. And if we have unutilized systems, and you might argue, is it best in NB Housing? Is it best to find a way to fund it and have it managed by the community? I think we need to look at this whole aspect. We send, as a province, I think it's about 15 million a year that comes in in the form of social systems and nonprofits, you know, with different groups. But are we getting the best value for the municipality in that? I feel like if there was a, and I say a kind of a management team that was governing this money coming into your community, so you could decide where best should it be distributed to get the best value. Because I think we, there's a gap here between Fredericton and the community and what's needed. And then you set priorities, because it's, you know, it's like, we'll never have money for everything, but we should have money to deal with the priorities. And when I think of 15 million, and it may be higher now, is that getting the best value? Or are we traditionally locked into, you know, some of these areas that just aren't getting the results they should? But you folks and your communities are in the best position to judge that.
Thank you. Merci, Monsieur Premier-Ministre.
Thank you. Moving on to social issues, councillor Crossman.
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Premier, thank you for being here this evening. Truly appreciate that. To your candidates, Dave, Minister Steves, I can't see the gentleman behind the podium. Welcome to Mr. Turner, Minister Turner, Minister Sharon Wilson, and Rob Weir, welcome as well. You've answered some really good questions this evening, and I think you understand that Moncton is probably one of the largest cities, the largest city right now in New Brunswick, that has to deal with mental health and addiction services, and the people that are living on our streets, and the people that are causing the most, I guess, call for service, shall we say. So I'll be very direct with my one question. Will you commit to building an inpatient stabilization and rehab center in Moncton for the most acute cases of mental health and addiction? But I'll have a sec, I'll have a backup for that as well. Where would you get the funding from to do such a rehab center and the staffing to go along with it, to provide the proper services? Because right now, a lot of the nonprofit agencies, such as John Howard, you know, Harvest House, are offering these services, and they can't keep up with obviously what's happening on the streets of Moncton. So, Mr. Premier, if you wouldn't mind, just answer that question for me. Thank you, Your Worship.
So certainly in the, in the analysis of what works and what doesn't work, and it's clear our focus has been on to a reduction, mental health and addiction treatment recovery program. And we know that hospitals, as I said earlier, aren't equipped to manage with mental health or addiction treatment in the fullness of what they need to be. What we're finding is that we have snippets of facilities, and I use the word snippets, not derogatorily, but just in terms of it needs to be more enhanced in order, and be able to have greater capacity, in order to treat individuals. What I have, what I have learned over the, over the while is, in meeting with community groups that are working with homeless and others on the street, is how long it takes to build that level of trust? How long it takes to have someone commit to a recovery and a retreat program? And you've got to be there when they're there. So we are going to, as part of this, and Moncton, I think it goes without saying, really, would be one of the areas for a center. I mean, it's, we probably are going to need about four centers, and but right now, I don't know that that's the number. But it's a combination of looking at what we have today and what we need to enhance, build on, and what we may need new. But the program is clear. It is, it is a starting right from, if it's a sentencing, like from a, from a judge saying, you know, you're going to be 60 days in jail, but if you're in jail for a drug issue, we're going to be starting that rehabilitation and then moving right into a treatment center. Or maybe having that option, so the judge can actually say, you go to this treatment center, and that'll be your penalty, and you stay there for a while. But the idea is, our commitment is clear on that. What that's going to cost, I really don't know at this point. And what facilities? What I do know is that when I talk to different people, even retired nurses, I talk to doctors that want to get out of the current system, many are interested in doing something different and being part of a strategy that is making a difference with the challenges we have. So the commitment will be clear in our platform. How many, how much, I don't know, but I would say it's a pretty safe bet that Moncton would be obviously one location. And what do we have here that we can build on, and what does that require?
Thank you. I'll move on to you, deputy mayor. I think, I think both questions were covered, so. Merci.
Merci, Madame Lamère. Bonsoir, Monsieur le Premier-Ministre. Merci d'avoir accepté notre invitation. Donc, comme vous savez sans doute, le dossier des enjeux sociaux n'est pas de juridiction municipale. Mais la ville de Moncton nous a rendue presque une de nos grandes priorités. Donc, assumez-vous la responsabilité première des soins et de la réduction du nombre de sensabris dans notre collectivité?
We need to work together on that. And I, and I think we have. I mean, I think we got a long ways to go, because we've had a lot of new people show up here, and a lot of people that weren't necessarily from here, that have settled in the community, in the homeless structure. But, but I think, you know, the minister certainly, I think, worked diligently with your, with your council, with your mayor, trying to fix some of these things. But it's an ongoing process. And do we want to reduce the number? Absolutely. I want, I want the streets to be, to be emptied of homeless. People shouldn't be living on the street. And I know there's many different groups. There's one here, there's one in St. John's starting up, there's 12 neighbors in Fredericton that are building, building, you know, homes for people to have a place to live. But it's more than just having a place to live. It's having a purpose. And, you know, one of the things that struck me the most in meeting with the group, and one individual who had obviously been, had been victim of addiction for many years, but had recovered, but it was noticeable the impact it had on this individual. But the thing that the person said to me that struck me the most was, you know, I'm getting my social assistance check, but I don't need, I don't need it all, because everything is covered for me. I have someone that's managing my check. I get some money when I need it, but I'm building a bank account. And I said, you know, she said, I never thought I'd have a bank account. I never thought that I would be able to plan my future and build some nest egg. So to that individual, it was hope. It was hope that there was a future. So when, when we say, is there hope every day if you're, you're going to an injection facility and getting high, and then laying around for the rest of the day and doing it again and doing it again? Is that hope? Is that creating a vision for people to be proud of and to live a fulfilled life? So we have this obligation, but it is going to take some tough love, because that's the only way we're going to make a difference. And we're going to have to just decide that, you know, the time has come, we're going to help people to help themselves, because it's our duty and humanity to do so.
Une dernière question. C'est un problème, c'est pas un problème unique au Nouveau-Brunswick, c'est un problème mondial. Donc, qu'est-ce que vous prévoyez comme prévention dans ce dossier?
It seems that it starts, and I, you know, I can't claim to be the, certainly the expert in what the health authorities might say is, how are we getting people there? At what age are, are, you know, children being subjected to drugs or addiction and then following down a path? As you know, we certainly support parents' role in raising their young kids. And I think that that has become more and more prevalent in so many areas, that parents need to be knowing what kids are doing and be part of that. We know in the schools now, as we've taken out the, you know, the, certainly the cellphones and made the schools, you know, certainly the classrooms more productive in the sense of following a curriculum. Getting to the basics of a curriculum, some have, you know, suggested that we actually have curriculum that is teaching people the situations that they can fall prey to. And do we do that in school now? Do we do the basics of even financial acumen in school? Do we, do we do the basics of, you know, just fundamentals that we one time would have said are very important in order to make the right decisions as you go forward? So I think there's a lot of components, and I, I can only commit here that I don't have all the answers, but I'm committed to make the decisions to make it happen.
Thank you. Councillor Butler, bring us home on community safety.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Mr. Premier, and all the candidates for coming here tonight. She didn't give me a four minutes, so I'm good.
Really?
Negative now? All right. I went negative before. So community safety is a big thing in the city of Moncton. One of the things that we've seen through Stats Canada is that in the last while, the last time it came out, we were the third highest in crime rate. And since 2021 to 2023, our policing costs went up 40%. Went from 23.4 million to 32 million. Cost of our community safety officers, we've had to employ more and more, and it's gone up 230%. So the crime is, the crime rate is really, and this is from having community safety committee meetings throughout the community, in the city, and people telling us that they're not feeling safe. So with that, you know, we have talked as a council, and we would really like to see some type of commitment to changing the Police Act with the requirements that there be more training, for sure, but to empower our community safety officers. There's other places in Canada has done this, in, you know, Battleford, Saskatchewan, and in Manitoba, they've given them more, more say or more power. And I think that's important, because this increase in policing, it's really hard to keep up with, with the cost that comes from Ottawa, the J Division comes, and we got no say.
We're doing, it's the same for us.
Yeah, absolutely. But we only get 10%, you get 30%, so there's a little difference. But, and so we'd like to see that, we'd like to have some type of change, at least, and look at the Police Act to see where we can, maybe as a committee or as a province, can change this. The second thing that we look at, and we spoke to the other candidates also, is the mental health court. I guess some people think it is working, some people think, say it's not, according to data in St. John, but mental health, we can't just keep sending them to provincial jail. We have to try to, and MU even spoke about it for a minute. We have to find out some way that people are held accountable, but at the same time, getting some type of result that they can come back into the community. For instance, if you get two years less a day and you go into the provincial jail, you know, we should be looking at their job skills. You know, they're two years walking around a yard and not doing a lot. You know, there could be something that we can help them with. You know, and myself personally, I'm a big believer in education. You know, there's people that go in, and a lot of them is, are way behind academic-wise when they become criminals and drop out of schools. GED is a very important thing that we need to get done. But these are things that we have to have them ready for when they come out. They're not coming out into a homeless situation. They're not coming on the street, you just left, dropped off, maybe even give them a tent. So I just get your thoughts on that, please. Thank you.
Sure, councillor. And firstly, I guess, on the safety, increasing the capabilities of safety officers, we've done that provincially. We've trained additional 50, 60 safety officers to actually have higher levels of skillset and be stopping cars, be checking, doing routine surveys. And, you know, if they're doing analysis, they're doing surveillance, they would call in the RCMP if it came to an actual bust of some sort or takedown or whatever. But there are those eyes and mirrors on the street. And so we've done that provincially, and I don't see any reason why we couldn't find a way to do that municipally, because it's the same issue. But, you know, interestingly enough, when you think of other abilities to deliver better results or more result, I think there's, there's many areas that people would want to do more if they had the ability to do so. I'll take the sheriffs as an example of that as well. And I met with some groups that were telling me about their routine and what they did, and they said, you know, we could do a whole lot more. And this, these were young sheriffs that were just, just wanted to be part of a bigger solution. So I guess I, I have, during COVID, we did that, and it is trying to get people to step up, but trying to say, you know, what more can we do? But yes, so on the safety, I think we should be looking at that, and I agree with that. On the mental health court, no, the system hasn't worked very well in St. John, but what here seems to be the problem? There's no place for them to go. And so if you have the facilities that you can say, okay, if they're sentenced to this treatment program and there's a place to go, absolutely. But that, what I've been told is that there's our, there's our roadblock, is that if we can align it with, with space and place for someone to go for treatment and then follow up through that as a series, I think it's an absolute path. And it follows very much to the mental health addiction recovery program that we're subscribing to. The other issues, we all, all have submitted this as, as the premiers of the country, to the federal government to reform the bail system, because it's currently now, you know, it is, it's a real problem. And some of the changes that were made are putting people on the street that shouldn't be on the street. And so there's a, there's a mix there somewhere of how we blend the right sentencing for the right people and the right offense, and then the recovery for those that just kind of got offside a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship.
Well, I think this concludes our meeting. I'd like to thank you very much for being here tonight, Mr. Premier, and to your ministers and your potential MLAs. We appreciate you stepping up and putting your names forward, and thank you very much for your service.
Thanks, Paula.
Merci beaucoup. Thank you.
Councillor Richard, motion to adjourn. Thank you.